Sure. Can I use your approach?
Tell us everyone who you are in case you don't know.
Okay, hi, my name's Lauren. I'm at 19 Downing Street here in the Village. And we have two events for the, I'm carrying my finger women. We have two events coming up. We have the Halloween carnival that's October 26th. It's a Saturday. It's from 1 until 2:30, I think, and it's for kids. I think we raise it to the fourth grade or second grade again. I can't remember if we, just the little ones. Second grade? Yeah? Was that you?
That was Jeff.
Oh, somebody got there.
I took a letter from this one.
Oh, okay. Oh, there it is, thanks. And then the Live in the Village, I think I talked to you about that already. It's December on Saturday. And we've worked, we've been working with Russ and Bill and gentlemen from RLM. Okay. And we're trying to upgrade the electrical. Our biggest thing is, or my biggest thing, I guess, at this point, I've talked to a few people in the community and they say, "Oh, we love the event. It's great. We love the Santa. This year we have a Santa that can get on the fire truck." Well, actually, he had bad knees. Of all things for a Santa to have bad knees. And he had a knee replaced, I think, in this October. And he wanted to come back and do it, but he just didn't know if he'd be able to have the kids on his knees. So, we have a much younger Santa this year, and he can come on the fire truck, and that's always a big thrill for the kids. But the biggest thing I'm hearing from people that I'm talking to about the event is, "It's great, we love it," but they turn on the tree and it's like, "Hmm, is that it?" There's just not enough wow factor to the tree. So, this year, I've asked Russ, we have three strands of lights and only two were put up last year. We've taken them all down, replaced all the bulbs. We hope to get all three strands up, so at least we'll have more light up there. And the other thing we'd like to do is to purchase maybe some LED white, LEDs, some of those warm white LED lights. I know that they did LEDs up in Peterson Park and they were too bluish and weird looking. If we could find some nice, we just, our biggest problem out there is we don't have enough power. We plug too many things in, it just trips the breaker. So, we can't, those things are so hot and they drop so much power, both the strands we have now. And I was just talking to Kathy and she said that there's a type of light that you can actually hang the strands down from the top. We want to put all the colored ones on, and I was saying we could put the white LEDs like over top to give kind of a double whammy, but if we could do the white ones kind of stranded down, and then if one of those goes out, it's much easier to replace than take all the strands on. It sounds like, Russ, they're planning to put them up on Monday, so I don't think I'll probably have anything purchased by then, but we're trying to get enough funds. What I've looked at are, the ones I've looked at are about 500 bucks. So, that along with, we need around 600 or 700 just to make the event, stay in the black. If we can raise some extra funds to get the 500, maybe make sure we can get those LED lights. Or if I can get them before Russ puts them up, I might just buy them out of pocket and then hopefully we'll get enough donations. We've just gone out to some businesses and asked for donations in the last week or so, so we don't know what's going to be coming in, but, so, that's what that is.
What's the tree you're gonna?
It's the smaller pine tree out there.
Where? On here?
Yeah, yeah. It's just the one right out by the street.
Okay. You talked to Kathy, you know we're gonna?
Yes, yeah. Up to the pine area, yeah. That'd be great. That'd be nice. So, she and I have been talking about.
You're gonna do it right here?
Yes, yeah, it's always been right here. One year we lit the big one and the little one, and that was, there's just not enough lights to do both of them. And it's too hard, I think, to get those big ones through. We had to borrow the little, very good thing. But if you have any questions or comments?
Did you check on the barrels?
We did. Oh, I did. That's the other thing, I just wanted to slow you down here, but we're gonna do some fire barrels around the ground.
That's a good idea.
And I talked to Russ, I talked to Bill, everybody's fine with it as long as you put them on bricks, they don't harm the grass. And I'm gonna have, they're gonna be manned the whole night. I think I've got an ex Columbus to light them and man them and deal with them all night long and take them down. So, probably three, maybe four, if we can get four barrels. I've got two. If anybody knows where to get drums, I know that Jeff was helping me out, I had to buy them, but if anybody's got burning drums or whatever in the back.
The classic ones?
Yeah. Yeah, that'd go overall. I know, not to do that.
All right, thank you. Please stand in the Pledge of Leaders. The Pledge of Leaders, two of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of members. Set. Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Yadda.
Here.
Motion to accept, excuse me.
And David.
And David. Oh, yeah, David's away too.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, accept them to the minutes of the previous council meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes of the previous council meeting.
I agree.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Notification of meaning to events to the public and news media. Bloopers. Finances?
Not yet.
Legislation?
Nothing.
Police?
Nothing until our next meeting, which will be November, Wednesday, November 6.
Streets?
Before our next meeting.
Which is the 14th. Boards, ARB, that's the first Thursday, which will be, what, the 3rd this month, 7:00. Planning, we're gonna try and shoot for the 23rd, that's a Wednesday, 7:00, at Village Hall. Orders on appeals?
Nothing.
West Reserve Fire Department.
Our next meeting will be October, on Wednesday, October 9. Joe, 7:30?
7:30.
Okay, 7:30. September 14th or 7th.
State Department of Commerce has announced that we'll meet on 14th. They haven't given a motion to do that, so we're gonna, here, put a motion under motions. Okay. Forest, 4th.
Fourth Tuesday, 7:30.
And Hines, 4th.
We decided we're gonna meet the 3rd, Wednesday, at 2:00 PM, at the Presbyterian Church.
Okay. Report from the mayor. I don't really have anything other than we talked about in caucus, talked about the Poindexter dorms called the Lori, about the tailgate with their mess consultants, talked about the banquet, and if anyone needs tickets, let me know, I'll get some more. And we do have an opening for the Historical Committee. Wesley Vickson is not allowed to serve, so if anyone has any one in mind, it would be good on that. We have four people right now, we're looking for a fifth. We meet once a month, usually the 4th Wednesday of the month.
Historical Society?
No, the Historical Preservation Committee.
The Hyneman, huh? He's a, he's a, he's a.
Okay.
I recommend him.
That is all I have. Motion to accept the mayor's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from fiscal officer.
Okay, I'm circulating a list of bills to be paid for your reviewing or signature. I contacted the county regarding our leaf agreement. We will not be getting that this year, irregardless of what was said by the previous administrator. They have run through all of the rainy day funds, there is no money, and that's it. The $4,000 will not be here this year.
Wait, who'd you talk to about that?
Lou Vega, the new administrator. The guy that, you tell him it was your?
He retired, I know.
Yeah, he retired. And beside that, the contract that the village signed was basically only for just the one year. So, if there was an extension between you and them, or the village and them, it wasn't in there.
Oh, he got my correspondence with him.
Well, yeah, and he said if you wish, if you're to call him, feel free.
Yeah.
His name is Lou Vega, and he's at the, the, yeah. Green Team.
They pretty much terminated, if you read the article in the newspaper, they've terminated all the things they have to do with leaf pickup across the whole county.
He said that what they would do is if you picked it up in bags and you hauled the bags to a site that they were setting up, they would get rid of them for you. But since we don't do that.
Does that mean a matter, huh?
Yes, because the guys from the prison will be throwing the bags on it.
I think they'll even pay for bags, right? You can go get bags at certain facilities.
Yeah. We have our machine.
Right, we have a machine.
The appropriation ordinance amendments that I have, you have that attached here to my report. The general fund has three line items that we are increasing due to increased electric bills for a couple of them. Street and state highway are being increased because of the salt we will be ordering, roughly $4,700. And that's it for the appropriation ordinance. We received an invoice for $2,300 from Buzzena Tree for the removal of the South Main Street trees. It is my understanding that the village will pay this bill and then we send the invoice.
Yeah, I have something on that.
Okay. And then the last item is, we issued a PO for $1,270 for a tree removal on Riverside Crosswood Union School. I don't know who is getting that most scheduled, but.
Who owns the land that has trees on it?
That's very interesting, because Mr. Haynes gave me a photo of Riverside, and it appears by this X that is inside the box, it belongs to the property owner.
And who was that doing that?
I don't know that.
It's not the school though, right?
No, this is a property.
What, are we gonna follow up and, on a theory that the elder?
Yeah.
You got it?
I got something on that.
Okay, well, defer to the solicitor as always.
That's an idea.
Do you see that little X?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, end of report.
Motion to accept this report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Report from Deputy Clerk. Yes, the only thing that I have is our little digital recorder, I think it's seen its days, it will not. The newer computers will recognize it, but it won't download the audio files. I tried it, Nick's tried it, and we just can't get the files to download off of the machines, so we probably need to look at buying a new one that's more compatible with, what do we have, Windows 7 now?
Windows 7, Windows 8.
I've seen them for between $25 and $75, just depends what we want to get. So, I can look and get prices if you want me to, or I can just go buy whatever you see, probably want to go. Let me just buy one. And I will, I will try to run a tax exempt through somewhere else, so we'll have to.
End of report.
And actually, it was a, it was not a very good piece of equipment, so you might want to spend a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if we got, if we got a different, more memory in it in case we have that problem again. I know they have it with SD cards, not only for pop it out, put it in and just move it. I'll look for one, I'm not gonna spend a ton of money, but I'll just look around.
All right, question to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm already sitting.
Uh, so Administrator Dave is not here, he said he didn't have any reports. If you've got any questions, just call him, he said. So, which brings us to my favorite part, the report from Solicitor.
Actually, I thought that Dave would have a lot of reports, because of a few things that have gone on this week. I talked to him after Mr. Major called me about the permit running out on Mr. Barthizer. And he wanted me to make sure that I, you know, pushed it to get a charge file before it ran out. And I talked to him, and I called Don Leone, who is the prosecutor in Struthers. I didn't see the emergency, because the situation created is kind of irrelevant to whether or not he has a permit to build. If we charge him, which we're doing, as I understand from talking to Dave, he is allowed to abate the premises. So, he in essence has a pseudo-permit to clean up, but only to clean up. So, we don't have to worry about whether or not he has a permit to build as an excuse to being a violation of our ordinance. Now, when I called Dave, after you and I talked about the status of filed with charge against Mr. Barthizer for the public nuisance, he had just come from Struthers Court on Mr. Isles time, and they had gotten that charge filed, and they were in court that day. He wanted to get that done first and then concentrate on Mr. Barthizer. So, I expect something within the next, you know, couple weeks moving forward on Barthizer. The interesting thing was, I had a call a couple days after that, that Barthizer brought his check down here for the, for a new permit. I have it right here, and I said, "Do not cash that check." So, we're not cashing it. We're gonna hold it. That's my advice, is you don't cash it, you don't grant him a permit, that you pursue the public ordinance, public nuisance ordinance. And the carrot is, you clean up what you've done, and you make it presentable, and then we may consider giving you another permit. What I would say, this is just my advice, I'm not, I'm trying to do, but you take this $2,000 and use it to clean up, because we know you've got it. So, take that, go clean it up, and then when you're ready to move on, then come back and see if it's got a permit. Because we've left money, we know he's left money.
Yes, and I don't agree, I told you that before. He's not gonna give another permit. What do you mean, "clean up"? Fill in the hole, get rid of all the rusted concrete and all that stuff?
Yes, yes, yes. Whatever, whatever council.
That's not gonna work.
Well, then the problem.
Still.
The problem, Mr. Major, is I see.
It's Kelly, Kelly, you're.
The problem is, I see, Mr. Major, is that we have, the goal here is to get that property looking presentable and then good. Right? So, to do that.
No, that's not gonna work.
All right, I don't have any other.
That's not gonna work.
I don't know what else we can do.
I thought you were gonna take him to court as a nuisance.
We are.
Okay, what does that mean?
That means he'll be charged with the, our ordinance, which is a public nuisance, and then as a result of that charge, he'll have a reasonable amount of time to abate the nuisance. He'll have 30, 60 days. So, once he does that, of course, he's gonna say, "I don't have a permit, so I can." And we're gonna say, "No, in the ordinance section, it says you have a reasonable amount of time to abate the nuisance, which is a pseudo-work permit. We will not cite you for working without a permit when you clean it up. We will give him that guarantee." That takes care of that part of it. So, best case scenario, whether we give him a permit or don't give him a permit, we want him to clean it up. Right?
Yeah, but clean up, you gotta describe what clean up means. The place looks like a shack.
I agree.
Well, how you gonna clean it up?
We gotta.
Explain that to me.
Okay. The only way that I would, that we can, we can arrive at that is as a council, to figure out what is important to this body, and give him a list that he is to complete, a task, a list of tasks. We want you to move the dirt, fill in the garage, or the basement that's been covered up. We want you to take off the cones with the, you know, the orange fencing. We want, we're gonna list for him what we want him to do. And when he does that, then he will be, he will be relieved of his infraction of the public nuisance ordinance. He will then be eligible to ask for a permit, which you can consider whether or not he is a council, want to grant him. But you gotta start somewhere. I mean, you want, we want, we want to get to the finish line, you gotta run the race first. You know, we gotta do a lot of stuff before we can get to that nice house. And this is, this is how I see you start it. And the fact that we've got $2,000 of it sitting in our safe, we tell him, we know you have, take this money, go hire people, and clean it up, and here's what we want you to do. There's never a better time, I think, that you're gonna have to motivate him to do what you want than right now.
Look, he gave that $2,000 bucks toward a permit. If we take that and use it someplace else, I think we're in legal problems.
We're not doing it, he's doing it. No, 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 we haven't cashed anything. We're gonna say.
We're just saying you have the money, we're not doing it, he's doing it.
We're saying, "We're gonna get your check back. We didn't cash it. Take that $2,000 and do this. You can, you can wrap the list, whatever you want him to do. We're not, we're not taking any of his money or doing anything. He has no permit right now. Right now, he is out, but so are we, because we still got that house sitting there that's got nothing being done. So, we want something to be done. We know he has money to do it. We have an ordinance that we filed that allows him to do it and motivates him to do it. And then you can decide later on, as a body, if you want to give him a permit to go on. So, you've gotta earn that now. And this is, this is the best position you've been in as a, as a council since this whole thing started, in my opinion. That's, that's the only thing I can come up with, Mr. Major. If you have, you know, something else, I'd be happy to look, look into and try to figure out a new one.
Did you talk to the county building inspector?
I called John Perko.
Yeah.
And he said the person I need to speak to is a, is a clerk that works down there. I'm, I'm gonna call her, find out the status of the permit, but it, but from what he left me, the message he left me, there are no infractions as of this time. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify that, but the Mahoney County is nothing that they are citing him for or anticipating citing him for, as far as I know right now.
So, there's no violation of county, is what they're saying?
Exactly.
It's our law that he's violating.
Yes. They, they focus on safety, and when he put up those cones, the barrier, he satisfied what is their emphasis. They, they focus on the safety of the construction project and the building of the, of the entity. They're not so much focused on the preservation of the beauty of the neighborhood that is being built, and they're concerned about safety. We're concerned about preservation of beauty. So.
Well, Perko told me, when I met with him on the 11th of June.
I reminded him. I reminded him.
What did he say? He said they don't have permits to do anything.
No. He said, "Get the status of it," which I think right now, the permit issue is not an issue of citation, though. See, the thing that you're gonna run into with county, if I'm reading it right, is he has no right to build according to them right now either.
Correct, correct.
Which, which is not good for us as well. So, we've gotta ask them, and I will, and I'm sure the libs, to allow him to clean this up. And I think they'll do that. But they're not, I don't think they're coming in here to cite him for anything, if they've got any problem with the way that that looks right now. They, that can sit there till whenever, as far as they're concerned. And if there's not a danger, there are not, you know, building code violations, if he's not building anything, if he's not, they're not gonna do anything.
What am I?
But, it is a mess, but I think, I think we can get something done now. I think we're in a position to do something. And I know, once Dave can focus on that a little bit and, and move on that, I think that's gonna motivate him. So, that's where we are on that.
Does he know the nuisance is done? Does he know the challenge is done?
I don't know. I don't know that Dave talked to me about it. I don't know that.
What was your question?
Well, does he know that we're filing nuisance claim against him?
I don't know.
I don't know, I haven't said that. I'm, I'm not gonna talk to him at this point, I haven't, I haven't had nothing said at all. All right, so that was issue number one.
Well, wait, Kelly Becker, she's not here, right? She talked to me the other day. She lives right across the street. And she's happy with this. Everybody has. They think we're foolish. We, we get after everybody else, like Lado, because he did something over here, and a guy did something over here, but this guy is three years now. We gotta get tough someplace along the line.
I think that's it right now, with filing, pursuing the ordinance charge, not renewing the permit. You're doing everything that you can do in light of, of that situation.
Well, you're, okay. It ain't okay. I mean, it isn't okay, but you say that's the best we can do?
Well, I mean, you're charging with an ordinance violation, I don't know what else, I don't know what else.
But you don't know what, how far along we are on this, ordinance violation.
What happens, it's like Mr. Islestein, what happens is, the prosecutor in Struthers has the final determination. I don't have that determination. I don't, I don't have the ability to charge people. So, I called Dom, and I left him the ordinance section, I said, "This is what we're looking at. That Dave Espante is gonna collect these pictures and gonna bring them down to you. We're interested in pursuing this charge." And what I understand from Dave, he met with him, and they agreed, since Islestein's case was last week, I think, or the week before, they were gonna focus on that first, and they got it, they got that done, they had their meeting on it, their pre-trial, now they're gonna focus on this. So, once Dave brings down the pictures, Dom reviews it, reviews the ordinance, and then it's his discretion to file. And I think he's going to, like he did here.
Who's dumb? A prosecutor?
Yeah, yes. To the over for Carol to make the wire.
Well, Joe, I've talked to a number of people out there too, and they've been impressed that this is a criminal action, the nuisance thing. That gets their attention.
That's right, yeah.
A criminal thing. And people perked up when I told them it's under the criminal code. So, I think they are feeling that this is a movement forward, and we do, we have some leverage on this guy with a criminal charge, which is very serious. So, people are paying attention to what we're doing, and there's been unanimous okay on it. They've been since very surprised that we wanna get a permit charge on this, which is serious.
Okay, what do we do with the $2,000?
Hold it, don't do anything. And then when you charge him, and he says, "I can't do anything because I don't have a permit," you say, number one, you can, because under the ordinance, it allows you to abate the premises, so you can clean it up. And I'm gonna talk to Dom about that. And number two, there's $2,000 that you're not gonna have to give us right now. You take that money, and you go and clean it up, because he may say he doesn't have the money, I don't know. But it's like, whenever we have someone in our court who, who is fined, pays a fine cost, we take their money, their bond money that we've kept, and we say, "Okay, we'll just take out what you owe us first, and then you're paid. You know, then you can have the rest back, not a lot of people left." So, we know he has funds to do it, we know that he's not allowed to do anything but that, we know that he's gonna be charged criminally, we believe, it's up to Dom, but I believe he will be. I don't think you've ever been in a position where you have as much impetus put upon him to do what he should have done three years ago as you do now. So, if ever, if anything's ever gonna happen, I think it's gonna be now. Other than that, Mr. Major, I don't fault counsel or anyone else, because he couldn't do anything, he had a permit, he just didn't, he didn't do anything. The statute, as I've said many, many times, is written in anticipation of people wanting to build a home and live in it, not someone just wanting to have it sit there. That's, that's, that's not what the statute is written for, so of course, you're not gonna have a lot of authority with it, because there's, most people don't do this.
Okay.
So, that's number one. Any other questions about that?
No.
Okay. The other thing is that I've talked to Don Leone, there's a Don Leone and a Don Leone. Don Leone is prosecutor in Struthers. So of course, you're not gonna have a lot of authority with it because there's, most people don't do this.
Okay.
So that's number one. Any other questions about that? Okay. The other thing is that I've talked to Dom Leone. There's a Dom Leone and a Don Leone. Dom Leone is prosecutor in Struthers. Dom Leone, who I've known for a long time, is a, a land guy, title guy. And I actually played on his, his golf team years ago. That's all I know. So if I ever had a question about property and titles, I would call Dom. So I called him up and I said, here's, here's the situation. So I told him to immediately, immediately. He goes, well, first of all, you have to find everyone's property. I said, okay, I'm, I'm right so far. I said, how do you find, how do you figure it? Because I, you know, do a title search. I didn't see anything on the plaque. He goes, no, you have to do a search of the history of the property. And what you'll do is you'll go back and find out when the property was platted, who owned it, and if it had ever been sold, if there was ever an easement, if it was ever divided, how the property was, how it progressed through the years. So I said, well, how much does it cost to do that? Because I think as a council, I know, I thought you were interested in having it done. And I said, there are two properties, but it sounds like there may be a third now that we're gonna talk about here. Normally, it's around $1,000 to do the two property searches. He said he would do ours for between $500 and $750 to do both of them. And I said that I would recommend to counsel that, that we hire him to do these property searches. And I bet he would do that too if he wanted, probably for the $750 to do all three of them. And then you will know exactly who owns that. And he will then tell you exactly who's responsible. And since the, the bill is $2,300 so far, you know, and we have another one, apparently we might do, that's over $3,000 for $750 to find out who owns it, I think it's worth it. Now, the downside is this is a case-by-case basis. So in other words, having an ordinance that says what it does, that the homeowners are responsible is all well and good, but it's gonna come down in neat situations to who owns that piece of property. Was the property conveyed to the village or was it conveyed to someone else? Is there an easement put on the property? Because Ohio doesn't have any right to the property or easement. You have to do a case-by-case to have a definitive answer as to who's responsible for the, the cutting of the tree, cutting down of the tree. So, so I was, I was pretty close to what, what my reading of the law was. And he knows how to do the part that I don't know how to do, which is to do the exact search and find out who owns it. So I'd recommend that, that we hire him to do the two for sure. And if you want, or to see how the two come out, see if you're happy with it, and then maybe consider it for another one. Any questions on that?
Is there any way that, I mean, obviously going forward, we're in that market. There's a lot of old trees in this town. And there's a lot of them in the right ways. Is there any way that we can send notice to a homeowner and say, you must remove that tree because we've had someone, an arborist look at it and it's dangerous and it must be removed? Then if they can prove that they don't own the property, then we pay.
Yeah, that might be an idea. I thought about that. He, he talked about, so describing property, well, you know, there's, there's a double strip. Because what side is it on? Is it on the side of the sidewalk or between the sidewalk and the home? That's a big deal. That sidewalk, I guess, is a big dividing factor in determining who owns these things. And I believe this is between the sidewalk and the road, if I'm not mistaken, of both of them. So what he would do is he would, he would look at this case and then he'd give us an opinion that we can have as we move forward. And we can draft, either use our ordinance and interpret it and then figure a policy on it or draft new ordinance that encompasses the opinion on how you might handle in the future. So yes, I understand what you're saying. No, I don't know the answer yet because I don't know exactly how, how he's gonna phrase this or how it's gonna come out. But I said, we need clarity because that's, I can't figure this out, you know? Get tripped up on treason and anything. So he's prepared to do that and I'd recommend it.
Thank you very much for checking into this because, I mean, obviously, we don't want liability issues. We don't want to see children hurt in this town. I mean, there are trees that need to be taken care of. And we want to do it the best way that we can and the least expensive way to the village as well.
And I think you did the right thing, cut it down absolutely. Something would have happened, it would have been terrible. And then, you know, it's good government. You could do it and then you go back and you look to see if you build them or not. I mean, I think that's the right way to do it. If the tree is not as much of a danger, not on a busy road like this on a side street or something, then you can take a little bit of time. I thought, you know, in light of the fact two people had trees fall on them and boarded on the same street a year apart, and killed one of them, it can happen. And I, I thought it was a good decision.
Okay, so with the $2,300, do I send that out then? Or do we send that?
Send the check?
Yes.
I think you send a check to him and then we.
And then we go after the homeowner and find out.
Right, because if, if we determine it's their property, their tree, and we send them the bill and they refuse, we can attach their taxes. We can put a lien or something on it to collect it from that.
So we're good with going forward with Don Leone to go ahead and determine if the property is ours or not, correct?
Why can't we put the owners on property and prove it's not theirs?
Well, that's what I was asking, but, you know.
Well, here's why.
You can't go running around every piece of property and say, maybe they have a, have a shot.
Well, here's why. Because we have one property and we say it's not theirs, and we've got to combat that.
Well, then we say produce evidence.
They, they have a lawyer's opinion that says it's not theirs.
I could see us running all over town and doing surveys.
I don't think so because I've been here now for four or five years. This is the second one. I mean, I, I, one thing that, that we do, and we're very conscientious, but we, we, sometimes we tend to take one instance and, and anticipate it's gonna happen over and over and over. And that doesn't happen as much as we think it's going to. Like I said, this is, this is the second time and two trees are on the same property. So if we did that at one time, we have two answers. If it starts happening continually, then I think you look at it until it does, to not use things based upon presumptions. From what I've seen, not only here, but also in the government downtown, you know, we're, we're really good about identifying possible risks, but a lot of times, the chances of those risks becoming patterns are actually occurring pretty slim. But I would say do it first and then if you start having it on the town, we'll talk about it. And for the, for the cost benefit, what you're learning versus what you're spending and the liability that you have, that's just the cost.
Sorry, I have this big tree up front there. I think it's a double strip. I don't want you guys to cut it down, but you gotta come out and survey the land.
Well, if we determine it's a danger, then we'll talk about that.
Any trees a danger?
I don't think so.
Is that a problem that way?
Well, I agree with you on that. And I understand what you're saying. And every day that I work, you know, in my other job, I have to take precautions on things that cost money because if I don't, if someone gets hurt later on or if I'm wrong about it, I'm gonna pay a heck of a lot more later. That's just the cost of doing government sometimes. And I know it's not, you know, pleasant, but, but to do it right and to be correct. I, I could give these folks an opinion saying that I think they're responsible and we can go sue each other. And I could spend $500, $10,000 on a lawsuit that we might lose versus spending $500 to determine exactly what the answer is. So I always try to balance the costs and, and, and the risk.
So you'll pay the bill and you'll invoice the town owner? Is that correct?
Yes. That's what I recommend.
And, but that's only for those. What about the one now up on Riverside that I guess we'll be removing next?
Well, what I would say is you send the bill and we see if they do say it's not theirs. So they know it's theirs, hey, that's wonderful.
We don't even know who it is though.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure if they know. Dick may know.
We can try and sell it before. Yeah, that's what I thought.
They, they know.
Thank you. Russ and I talked, I remember them trying to sell that property years and years ago to the school, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I think I know what's, yeah. So, so I think you sell, you send it to them.
Was it charred or something?
Yes.
So it's forever?
Yeah, so I think you send it. And if she says no, then you talk about it and I would do, right, search. But you have, I think you have to do that to make sure you're right.
So on that one then?
Send it to her.
Send the bill before we saw it down? Or cut it down? Get the bill from the tree service, send the bill to her then, or do we pay that?
Here's what I would do. Who determined that it was a dangerous tree?
Dick.
Okay. All right. I'll write her a letter saying that this tree's been determined in public danger in accordance with our ordinance. The tree needs to come down. We're gonna give you, I'm gonna give her an amount of time, I, I think 14 days, to either take the tree down or indicate to us the timeframe to which you will take the tree down. If you do not intend to do that, then you need to let us know. We will proceed to take the tree down and look towards you to recoup the monies that we spent. So if she can't have it taken down, you know, $1,500, if she knows somebody, I'd give her that opportunity, understanding that if you don't do it, then we're gonna do it and we're gonna track you for the amount. So you have that back.
So then we should let our guys know that they shouldn't be slowing it down yet.
I believe at the last meeting that Bill was the one who insisted that that tree come down. It was not so much Dick. It was Bill saying that that tree needs to come down.
Okay. I'll send it to her tomorrow. I'll give her a week to let me know.
Well, if you just say if you don't do it within 30 days, we're gonna do it. So she doesn't have to, we don't, not waiting for a response, you know, just, no.
Well, I'm gonna let her indicate within a week what she's gonna do. And have it done.
And if you don't hear from her, we're gonna proceed.
Yes. And if I don't hear within a week, Bill will assume you're not gonna do it. We'll take it down and we'll keep the money.
And tag it.
See, that's the thing that I'm not sure about because I threw the ordinance because I thought it had to be declared a danger.
Because it's got, it's marked and it's got a thing all around it. We won't buy that. I mean, that tree is definitely dead.
It's surely some bees nested.
Is that why that's there? Seriously?
Yeah. And we've sprayed it a couple times, to be honest with you, to try and, and we haven't had any success in.
So we put the thing around it there?
Yep.
Okay. And it's right across from the school.
But we did that for the bees, right? Is that why you put the thing around it?
Yes.
For the bees, not because, as it was falling.
Yeah, not because it was falling, because it was giant bees.
Is there a, is there an orange ribbon around it?
We've sprayed it.
Bizetta probably did that.
I don't know if there's an orange ribbon around it.
Yeah, there was.
There's a yellow ribbon around the outside of it.
I thought the tree itself was tagged.
When Bizetta goes out, they, they put that orange thing around it because it tells you that's, that's a danger to come down.
So is Bizetta the one that gave the extra?
Yes, that's your goddamn.
All right, I'll send the letter up to her tomorrow. Then I'll let you know. I'll let you know if I can make her back.
All right.
I would think I went to Stu. You got to go right now.
You don't want me to send the letter yet?
No, no, no.
I'll send the letter.
Sending your buddy after to do the survey.
So you don't want me to order to cut a search yet?
I, I don't want to.
On that one, on the extra one, step two, we've already done. We definitely wanna have the survey, right? I mean, we're gonna have to pay this bill because we contracted with Bizetta.
I think we're second best. You have one attorney's opinion that says it is. It's about Don Leone's arrest approval.
Well, I think if you wanna cut the money, or you open yourself up to a lawsuit.
We pay it or we have it surveyed for $700 instead of $2,000. It's almost $2,000.
Right.
And aren't true.
And it may be, Mark, that, that we own it. I mean, I'm not saying that if you pay the money and have it surveyed, that you're gonna have an opinion that says you can get them. I'm just saying, if you wanna go get the money, which it sounds like you do, I think you don't look into it, you have to know for sure whose property it is. That's the, that's the rule in Ohio. That's the law.
Okay, let me ask you a question, Anthony. Is, is it clear cut in our laws that if we prove without a doubt it's their property, then they are 100% responsible? So then it could go litigation purpose?
No, our law does not really cover that. Our law talks about if there is a dangerous tree that overhangs either the public safety or public walkways, that the owner has to take it down. It does not talk about ownership of the property as far as being a double strip. It doesn't address, address double strips.
I guess I'll restate that. If we prove it's their property, is there any way that they could win a lot of favor? Are we gonna throw the $700 away instead of the favor?
Well, because I'm not the judge in case if you ever got that far, I can't tell you what would happen. But I would tell you, if you want, if you wanna avoid a dangerous precedent, then, then let this go and don't do anything. If you, if you do this and you find out that this is owned by the landowner and you don't wanna pay, and we assume we win, then that can be the precedent. That we're gonna find out whose it is and if it's ours, we'll pay for it. And if it's not ours, then we're not, you, you're gonna pay for it. So when we tell you we're asking to pay for something, you know, it's yours, you better pay for it.
It's a first, but by body.
I agree.
And there's a ton of trees, but you know, I think council needs to take an active role. And maybe we need to make some kind of a policy to our residents that you can only be permitted to put certain types of trees in the double strip area. Because this is gonna be an ongoing thing. It is. And there's no way around it because we're gonna have a lot of dangerous trees to deal with. And is there a reason that we can't restrict the type of tree that goes into a double strip, a public area where?
Yeah, I think you, you can restrict them putting up a tree that is not on their property that's in the double strip. Because they did that under the sign. They ended up putting a new tree up. And, and I thought we could go tear it down if we wanted to. Now, right now, that tree's not a nuisance to anybody. It's a little thing. In about 15 years, it's gonna, it's gonna be the next, you know, someone else's issue to be talking about. So the, the issue itself is endless in its, the ways it can, can play out, you know? But if you look at history, if you look at the time that you've all been here, think about how many times this has come up that we've had to go this far. One, two, three. You know, the percentages say that this is a rarity, figure this out, that a tree in a double strip that's gonna overhang something, that's gonna be, you know, sick and has to be taken down and an owner's gonna say no. You've got seven factors before you get to the, to the point that we are today. That's not gonna happen most of the time. It did here. You know, because I, I was even talking to my son today about my job. And I said, we're a very active electorate. They know their laws. At least they think they do. And most other places are not gonna question when you send them the bill. Ours are gonna do that. And when they do, then the burden's on us, you know, if you wanna do it the right way. That's why we couldn't get the, sorry, utility done. Because we had an active electorate that said we don't want that. Struthers did it. Whoever else did it without even linking it up. But that's what we have a little repol and that's part of why we live here, I guess. We like it, but this is what you do, this is what you pay for. So I'm not telling you what, what you wanna hear us. I know that. I'm not telling you what the easy way is. I'm telling you what I think the right way is and the legal way. And, and that's what I'm supposed to do. Whether or not you even wanna, not check it out anymore, that's up to you. Tell me, go sue them tomorrow and I'll do it. I'll vouch against it, but I'll do it. And, and, you know, if we're not right, we're gonna lose. And then you're gonna pay thousands and thousands of dollars for lawsuit dues and file.
And then we're gonna get dropped?
Sure.
Yeah, that's another thing you have to consider. We've been really good about not having a lot of, you know, liability issues and our, you know, insurance premiums show that.
Because we're very proactive when we should be. And we were here. That's all that's in our report. And I can send off some letter tomorrow on the Southern property.
Make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Fall in favor.
I oppose.
Chief of Police and the Street Commissioner. We have a copy of that. Any questions on that, Russ? We definitely request on here for executive session.
No. We might be doing that to executive.
Both departments submitted, right?
Yes, we're ready to do. You're withdrawing the executive?
Yeah, I don't need the executive.
Motion to accept the Street and Police.
Second. Fall in favor. Any opposed? Airports from Engineer. Okay, Airports, some outstanding committees of council finding its way to audit insurance.
Okay, a couple of things real quick. Lauren didn't answer the question in regards to what is going to be considered full-time hours by the state now? And actually, the federal is what she was thinking of at 30 hours, but Ohio's law is 25. So that explains what YASU did.
25 is full time.
That is gonna be the new full time. So we will be required to offer anyone who works 25 hours hospitalization if we have a plan. So something to think about how you're gonna handle this. Are you willing to pay for more people to have insurance? Or are you going to choose maybe more part-time people, keeping them under 25 hours?
If I remember correctly, you cannot change a description of the job that you have so that that person does not get benefits. You can create a new position that does not have more than 25 hours work for the future. No, but if you cut that, that's a huge red flag and you'll get sued for that.
So we have to reestablish positions and move those people over to that position?
So if we have fluctuating hours where part-timers work, maybe they hit 25 hours one week and they dump the next week? We would have to.
No, that's okay. You can't create a position, you can't, you can't make someone work so that they don't qualify for those benefits.
Existing.
Yes.
Because, for example, if I'm hearing you right, if we say you're a part-time officer and our ordinance says 32 hours, we can't call him a part-time officer. We have to call him something else now and give. we can't call him a part-time officer, we have to call him something else now, and give him a 25-hour.
Hey, you can call him part-time. I believe you have to offer him the chance to have benefits then, because he not qualified.
So we have to establish, if, if we're not gonna offer him benefits, we have to establish a new position?
Or you can offer a lot.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, no, no, no. If you, if you, if you wanna hire a new position, you have to create the position, so it's 24 hours or less.
Right, so we have to create a new position.
But you can't change that person's job description, and they can put him going to a new position, so he does not get benefits. You can't, you can't move him to take him by.
So everyone that we, and I, I don't know if we have it in our ordinance, so everyone we have is a part-time officer, and I think it says 32 hours. That person's now gonna be automatically, because he's hired as a part-time now, he's automatically gonna start getting benefits.
You know, that's possible, and I don't know exactly how this new healthcare is gonna interpret that. But all I know is the thrust of this healthcare is that everyone's included or eligible. Now, exactly how it applies, I don't know. I have to read, and still no one knows how it's gonna work, we're still learning. We just had a course the other day on it. It's still gonna be litigated, like it was when we did the gasoline leases. Remember I said there'd be a lot of litigation coming? All these cases are being litigated, and they're, all the questions we had in the past have been answered. But right now, there's too many things that are unknown about how, how it applies. So I don't know.
And how is this data law to secrecy with the federal law? So how did we get away with this?
Well, yeah, what I've read is that there are states who are in violation of the federal law, that the federal government are not gonna do anything to. That they are, they're in violation of what the federal law is, and the federal government has, is choosing which ones they're gonna, which issues they're gonna go after, and which ones they're not. So I don't know. I, I don't know where Ohio's standing. Some, some states are assuming the government, some governments are assuming the states on certain issues. You know, with your, Ohio may say, we're not, we're not bound by you. Ohio would wanna be bound by them, because that would increase the hours before someone's full-time. I don't, I don't know how that's gonna play out, I really don't.
So I think that what Russ said is that we're gonna probably have at least two people who, from the hours they work right now, aren't qualified for hospitalization. But you know, that's part of the purpose of us talking to National Healthcare, is that we get some ideas of options, of what we can do going forward. I think that we all know that there's gonna have to be changes, there's gonna have to be some changes. Because no one is going to be able to afford to give 100% paid hospitalization. It's just gonna be a thing of the past. Everybody is gonna have to contribute to this country to help pay. And I mean, you see what's happening with the changes in the law. I made sure that everybody got a copy, if you saw this letter in your last payroll. This was one of the things that they told us in the seminar, it was mandatory by the federal government that every employee receive this letter by October 1st, or the fines would be $100 a day. So along with Nick's help, we got all of the letters out, making sure that everybody got one, so that we wouldn't be fined. Then they must've got a little backlash, because Lori sent me a letter, and they said they put the fines on hold.
That's my second letter I got, I got one downtown today.
Did you? Okay. And so they were just, right now, saying that they're recommending they would like it as a courtesy to go out to everyone. We met the first deadline, but I mean, obviously, there's a lot of confusion over this. And it seems to be ongoing.
Can I ask you a question? What's the, what's the 50-employee rule? How does that affect the ordinance?
The 50. The 50 means that you don't have to offer hospitalization to everyone, part-time. But if you have people who are classified as full-time, the new full-time, you have to offer it.
No matter how many?
That's where we have.
No matter how many employees you have?
No, it, well, you're talking about the 50 and under. Because, you know, that was my first reaction too, and I think Dave felt the same way, because I could see the, the looks of the exchange with me. We were thinking, oh, we're gonna be all right with this, because we're under 50. That's not the case. If you're under 50, but your people qualify as a full-time number of hours, you have to offer it.
And that's regardless of what, public or private, that's the rule?
My understanding is it's everybody, it's gonna be everybody. And then, in addition to that, just because you're small, you're still gonna have to pay the fees, which come January 3rd, we are, by the way, remember I told you, I asked about, I don't have that letter with me, but I gave it to you at the last meeting. There were some additional things, and they are the fees that get tacked on per person as of January 1st, another two-point-something raise in premium on top of the one that we just signed for, the 7%, 7-point-something percent that we signed for on this one. We're gonna have another raise in premium as of January 1st, that's two-point-something. We're gonna have fees, two types of different fees that have to be paid per employee, okay? So all of these things, had we waited until March, it would be even worse, because we probably would've been looking at 20% increase in premium, is what, you know, they were saying at the seminar, if we waited. This was a stall tactic, basically, what we did, to get us through another year. Did you guys do this too? Did you understand? And I think everybody was looking to do this, because we're all so unsure about what's coming and what our options are gonna be, and you don't wanna make mistakes, you know? I mean, not as long as this.
Is there a, does Ohio have a website for that information?
Yeah, and I think it's listed on that letter that came out. Or this might be just federal.
Because I'm sure if there's something that talks about the Ohio hours, then there would be something with the Ohio. And it might be just as easy as going to Ohio.gov and trying to.
Well, she did not give me something in writing about five hours, she called me to tell me that, that the federal was 30 and Ohio was 25. So I guess that's all that we can do with this for right now. Are we, are we, I'm just not here. I would really like to go forward with the Star Plus thing. Is everybody okay with that? I see this as a way to increase revenue on our investments with Star, and.
Tell us again.
Star Plus is, is a new program for Star Ohio. It's still part of state treasurers, it's 100% FDIC, but it's better return.
What percentage is it more?
I can't even tell you that. Nick has all of the information. Okay, so again, we need finance to meet on this. Okay, I've asked a couple of times about it. Do you want to do it before a council meeting, so that we are all here? We can be here half hour early and talk about it?
Before his council meeting, I'm on that committee.
And there's so many meetings, otherwise we need to schedule a meeting for this, so we can talk about it.
Well, let's do it around the next two meetings, the 14th. You gonna be here now?
14th.
That Monday?
So how be, how be there for the?
On a Monday?
Streets meets before the council meeting.
Streets have something important going on, I tell you, that you need to meet that day?
I mean, I could be with you. I could still be.
That's fine.
I mean, I'd really like to get this thing rolling, because it's relevant.
Well, let's, we have to get the figures. Well, we are anyway, so.
The other thing that I mentioned to Bill, and I had talked to Kathy about it a little.
Through Bloopers.
That, you know, if, we're talking about doing these changes outside here with the gazebo and the. Perkala. Perkala, thank you very much. And the electric, and using that facility, I guess there was a beautiful wedding here this past year, out here. And if we're, if we're going to use the grounds, let people use the grounds in that way, that we charge a rental fee. You know, because they're gonna use electric, they're going to use the property, hopefully, you know, nothing will be damaged. And other places all do this. You know, it also helps control that you keep, you know, a nice area there.
How much do other places charge?
Well, Gorman Park is exorbitant.
How much in there?
I don't know, I know what they charge for the pavilions, because we rent a pavilion every year for our family reunion. And they are very high, but they keep the park very nice. So I mean, I don't think we should get ridiculous, and perhaps maybe we talked about that a resident could have a different rate than someone who's a law.
Well, why don't we turn that to the committee and let them work it out?
Right, but as a revenue source. Okay, so, I mean, we're just talking about things that possibly can bring in some money to the village. Obviously, we don't have a lot of things to make revenue, and we've lost revenue since 2008 consistently.
You may want to conclude firing this field in that discussion.
Okay.
Except there's people that go along.
That's a great idea, yeah. And then, Mayor, you mentioned also about an additional permit cap, perhaps? Which is a very small amount. That we, I think we are able to put one more on. And I mean, that's a minimal amount of money to ask. So I think, you know, just from a financial point of view, that we could think about these few options, so try to increase revenue. End of report.
Where are you from?
Finance.
Finance, let's make some finance.
Fall in favor? Legislation and policy. Police and fire. Streets, sidewalks, and drainage. Bloopers. Airports and boards, planning commission. Bill's not here, we had our meeting last time, we talked a lot about offense ordinance, getting a better offense ordinance than we have right now, it's real vague. Dave's gonna review a bunch of things, other towns, and then come back to us with what he thinks. So that's been all done right there before. Board of Zoning Appeals? Architecture, are you board? You're on that?
I am, but we don't have anything that I can, right now, booking meeting in the next week.
This week, Thursday. It's the first.
Seven o'clock, right?
Forest Board?
I gave everybody a copy of all the minutes, not to date, so. We meet the third Tuesday, third of the month, at 7:00.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Fall in favor? Any opposed? Hind Warrior?
Okay, you appointed Kathy Lynn, and she's our recording secretary. Rebecca Rogers is our financial secretary. And we meet every, every other month. And we're gonna meet at the third Wednesday at 3 o'clock. And we normally meet at, up at the Presbyterian Church.
And there was a written report from that too. Motion to accept?
Second.
Fall in favor? Any opposed? Okay, report from special committees. Report from special committees. Communications from residents.
I just have a comment real quickly. I know you've been talking about the trees a lot, and formerly, my husband Alan was tree commissioner, and that position was very vague. I know now that Dick Ames is tree commissioner. Some of the issues with the trees, I'm suggesting that council consider having a licensed arborist who is not employed by a company who makes their money cutting down trees. If we would approach Mill Creek Park and see if there is an arborist there that would dedicate some time to look at trees that are of issue. Because if someone came to me and said, we're gonna cut down a tree on your property, and you're gonna have to pay for it, because we have determined it's a nuisance, I would really wanna see proof that my tree was either diseased or damaged in some way, before someone would cut down the tree and then charge me. So it, it's just something to consider. I know Mill Creek Park, as part of our community, is very active and willing to do that type of thing. But it's like me going to a plastic surgeon and saying, do you think I need a facelift? They're gonna say yes, and you probably all will too, but that, that, that is beside. It's whoever, you know, is seeking to receive that revenue, may in fact be a little bit biased as to the decision. So if you had an unbiased arborist, so that's my suggestion.
Kathy, you wanna mention that we want to spend about $2,500 for Christmas, Christmas on that big tree?
Okay, I will mention that then. We met on the 24th of September, Joe Major, Rebecca Rogers, Bill Donovan, I, Bob Zetica, Russ Beatty was there by invitation. And we were looking at decorations on the triangle of the Hind property. If you remember, there used to be decorations there, they were sort of sad-looking. And now, they're in storage, the bulbs are too expensive to replace. So three of us, Bill Donovan, Rebecca Rogers, and I, are looking into purchasing not only lights, low-energy LED lights, and there are receptacles there for the lights, borrowing the bucket truck from Struthers to have the lights put up. And also with funds that we hope to have available, to put up snowflakes, fairly large, hanging from some of the maple trees in that area. So it would be Christmasy, but it would be more holiday. And we are looking right now at a potential budget of $2,500 to come from the Hind fund to purchase those decorations. And that does not include, unfortunately, any extension cords or labor that may be involved. Because most likely, it would be the village's maintenance crew that would be stringing the lights for us.
Thank you. But I, I'd also like to mention about Mike Simon.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, remember him? Did you check on him?
No.
Did you find him?
No, I did not.
Remember the gentleman that came?
Yeah, I had got a call this morning from Rebecca Rogers. Yeah, Mike in the main.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the issue is that I would have to go through every one of those minutes for four years to find out what he approached. And I think it was.
For $5,000, to donate $5,000.
Was that Simon, or was it?
It was Mr. Maransky.
Maransky.
Well, they didn't both admit.
Simon came in and spoke on behalf?
Simon came in and spoke on behalf.
It was probably two, three years ago, it wasn't last year.
Wasn't last year, and I know that Dave responded, was on council, so it.
So that was two years ago.
Three and a half.
It was two years ago, because I was back.
Okay.
Because I was here for that.
Okay.
Do you want me to call?
Well, here is my dilemma, and maybe you can help me through this, and Joe, I'm sorry I'm mentioning this now. But he approached the village and not the Hind fund, so I don't, I would be very happy if he would, you know, say, lights for everybody, but if.
He was talking about the Hind fund, that he was.
Well, was he? Oh, well, then I feel good about that. Okay, I don't know, Chris, do you want? Because Joe and I are gonna meet with him, if we could get ahold of him and.
If you'd be so kind to give it to us.
We sent a letter to Ed Maransky last year, do you remember that? I sent it on behalf, I said, you know, Mayor Sikafus mentioned that this money was available. I don't know if he ever contacted the village at all.
Not, not.
No, I sent out another one this year, just to ask if he's got any. This was Maransky directly, I don't know how Simon's involved.
Well, then who, how, how should we resolve this? Chris or Joe or? Do you want to, you've talked to him?
Yeah.
I'll give you, it's not a very.
But if he's got enough funds, that some of it could come to work helping that tree, that would be great.
He was just in the paper, because he just donated $5,000 to the police dog fund.
Chris, are you something, sir?
Yeah, my name is, I'd like to stand up, excuse me, my legs are on fire right now. Can't do it, sorry.
Just give me a name and address.
Yeah, my name is Randy Columbo, I live at 372 Johnson Place. You guys did a beautiful job of paving my street, it needed it severely, right across from north, that whole street. The only problem is, I got a four-and-a-half-inch speed bump going into my driveway. It's about this high, the curb. It's about this high, the curb. Okay, that's how it come out. Now, as you can see, I got a cane. Reason I have a cane, I had a double spine surgery about a year and a half ago and I was a paraplegic. So I got my legs back, but the problem is when I go over that bump, I feel pain. And every time I feel pain, I want to give somebody else some pain. It's, it's not, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a good thing. I'm glad you guys paved the street. That was a, a great thing because coming down the street, my back just shook to sit in the car. But the driveway, the curb needs fixed. Now, I talked to you one time, Joe. I called you on the phone about a month ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, that was that.
Yep.
Now, I talked to a cement finisher, a cement guy that has a saw. Anywhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five dollars, he will cut that curb down and fix it perfect. And that's, that's where I'm at.
Our engineer told me that all the driveways had been, uh, taken care of.
He lied to you. He lied.
Okay, 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 we'll take care of that.
Mr. Vable was in my driveway tonight. He could verify it's four-and-a-half inches at least they left. Now, I don't know if they didn't feather it or they were supposed to feather it.
Yeah.
About, the last time it was paved was probably about maybe eight. I'm just guessing, eight, nine years ago and it happened then. The village come out and put a nice little, um, wedge of asphalt. That was great until the first snow and it landed up into the neighbor's yard. I was wrong with all the other snow. Took it right out. That's, that's not a fix here. That's why I'm here tonight. I mean, I'm hoping you guys come through with this because my back hurts going over that curb. If anybody wants to come down and look at it, more than welcome. But that man right there, just, he picked me up tonight because I don't drive. I have not a lot of driving. My legs jump too much. And, um, but I have two boys and a wife and it's horrendous when you go over. It's like you're going over a big speed bump.
Okay. Did you?
Yeah, Russ. Now, we talked about Russ's driveway.
I mean, I could, like I says, I got a price from a, a cement man and he'll, they have a special saw that cuts it this way. It cuts, it cuts right into the curb and he'll cut it out between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five, somewhere in that area. Not.
Do you have a saw in?
Wait, wait. They're supposed to take care of it. Yeah. So get ahold of Gary. Don't, don't do nothing. Don't. I'll, I'll call this guy.
More than one driver on that street.
Yeah, it's not just five driveway. There's other ones on the street.
Yeah. Get that taken care of.
Well, like I says, I talked to you, Joe, about a month and a half ago and nothing's been done. So I mean, how long am I going to wait? That's all I'm looking at, you know, I just.
Okay, I'll be able to talk tomorrow to our guys. Okay, what's your address?
372.
372.
Johnson Place.
Okay.
You're right, the reason the wedge is going to last for months.
No, yeah, as soon as the plot hits it and they tried it the last time, it does great for a while. That plot puts it in neighbor's yard, then they go to hear him bitch.
Anyone else? Hold on a second, sir. All right, any new business? Any old business? All right, motions, ordinances, resolutions?
I want to make a motion for an ordinance, um, to waive the free reading actually on an ordinance to amend appropriations.
Second.
Would you make a emergency?
Yes, that's right.
Um, roll call, please. Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Attorney Lumber?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Make a motion for an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1429-13, permanent appropriations, retroactive to September the 29th and to declare emergency.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Attorney Lumber?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Any other motions, ordinances, resolutions?
Okay, I got a couple, three. I'd like to do one here for Russ.
You get it?
Yeah. Maybe we can take the other one, um, good maybe, and the other one is, um.
I'm not going to record the whole paragraph.
No, the first paragraph, okay? Is that, is that? Russ, we have a resolution here. Honored Russ Beatty for distinguished accomplishments and recognition of a professional and community leader. And recognizing him and express congratulations to him as a recipient of the Poland School's Foundation Alumnus of the Year.
All in favor?
Aye.
First. Everyone else turned it down. I'd like to present a resolution to honor bridehood for distinguished accomplishments and recognition as a professional and community leader and to recognize him and express congratulations to him as the recipient of the Poland School Foundation Alumnus of the Year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I'd like to present another resolution to honor Ruth Metzger for distinguished academic contributions and, uh, okay, Mayor, we're going to help him with that. Honoratorious service to the Poland Schools and to recognize her and express congratulations to her as a recipient of the Poland School Foundation Educator of the Year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other motions, ordinances, resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to change the regularly scheduled meeting of October the 15th to October the 14th, so regular council meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to declare anything canceled second meeting? Probably do that on that meeting, right?
Can do it now if you wish.
And cancel when the meeting goes to 14.
Okay. All right, any other motions, ordinances, resolutions? Yeah, um, we want to make a motion, seven to retreat for.
Yes.
Ten, Thursday, 31st, from five to seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone else?
You want the motion on this, uh.
Counsel wants that information.
Oh, yeah.
Take a resolution that we, uh.
Motion.
A motion to, uh, hire a, what's his name?
Attorney Don Liam.
To make a survey of the property on Riverside Drive to determine the ownership.
Two properties.
Two properties.
And not more than seven.
And not.
No, cool.
One is on Riverside and one is South Main.
The bank building.
The bank, the, the, and the Uals.
Well, that's Riverside.
Yes.
Yeah, the bank building and Uals are the two that he's.
And you think maybe he could do the other one too?
Thank you, Will.